All right. Good evening, everybody. It is the East Bay Charter Township Regular Board Meeting on Monday, November 10th at 6:30 PM. We'll call the meeting to order and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we'll do roll call attendance?
Bartlett.
Yes.
M. Cortaid.
Here.
Lyle.
Yes.
S. Cortaid.
Here.
Walters.
Anna.
Cook.
Here.
And Friend.
Here. All right, thank you. On the agenda, we will review for conflict of interest. On our agenda, we have a road naming for Calypso Court, town line apartments, paramedic wage for Lemcool, an offer of employment. I will be asking for the disposal of the surplus ambulance to be taken off. Zoning amendments four twenty-five through seven twenty-five, which are temporary dwelling units, impervious definition, accessory dwelling units, steep slopes, corridor improvement authority appointments, DNR trust fund grant agreement, Safe Road to School contract addendum, Live East Bay Connection engineering proposal, public hearing for the Streetlight Special Assessment Districts, vehicle purchase, upcoming fiscal year audits, and fiscal year 2026 draft budget. With that, does anybody have a conflict on any of the agenda items? Okay, we'll move forward to approval of the agenda. I did mention removing the disposal of surplus ambulance. I also want to let you know, too, we had scheduled to have the sewer financial discussion at our November board meeting as Acme was having theirs at their November board meeting, which was last week. We don't have everything ready through Don Lund with the financials. She's just about there, but asked for a little bit more time. So we are looking at a December 3rd, was it December 3rd she said? Special meeting, it's a Wednesday. So with that, she will be in town, have the information. She's meeting with Acme Township December 2nd. So, but she wanted to let you know that she was diligently working on that information. So with that, is there approval of the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Okay, there's a motion by Walters and support by Cook. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have an agenda. We'll move to public comment. Is there any public comment tonight? Okay, seeing no public comment, we will move to correspondence and reports. You'll see in your packet, we have the road commission updates. They must have been pretty busy tying up some projects. We just have two of them there, but I know that they've been very busy. Traverse Connect Quarter Three Growth Barometer, Treasurers Report, Supervisors Meeting Log. If anyone has any questions on those, feel free to ask. And otherwise, we will move on to the consent agenda. And Ann, if you could go over the consent agenda?
Certainly. The purpose of the consent agenda is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one board motion without discussion. Any member of the board, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent agenda be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent agenda, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single board action adopting the consent calendar. This evening, you have board minutes, October 13th, 2025, regular meeting, recommend approval. From the general fund, check numbers 19901 through 19973, paid in the amount of $111,465.80 with check number 19846 previously approved. The emergency fund, check number 6059 through 6084, in the amount of $13,947.07. The receiving fund, check numbers 3000 through 3004, paid in the amount of $371,861.84. The escrow fund, check numbers 2115 through 2117, the amount of $38,241.85. The roads SAD fund, check numbers 1122, was paid in the amount of $4,534.38. Two payrolls, October 5th through October 18th, check number 7971 through 7973, totaled A special pay correction for that same payroll, October 5th through October 18th, check number 7974, included $44.22 for payroll tax and a check for $11.57 for withholding. And the payroll dated October 19th through November 1st, check number 7975 through 7977, totaled $76,419.94. Total amount of payroll, $148,899.50. Total amount paid, $688,950.44. There are no proposed budget adjustments and other items are the road naming of Calypso Court, wage turnover, town line apartments, and a paramedic wage.
Water turnover.
Water turn, oh, what did I say?
Wage.
Wage, sorry, I'm looking down. Water turnover.
Okay. Would anybody on the board like anything removed from the consent agenda?
I guess I'd like to see the water turnover removed.
Okay, sure. And would anybody from the public like anything removed from the consent agenda? Okay, we'll move forward with that consent agenda and we will put the water, we'll put it just first, we'll do that right before we do the East Bay ambulance. Okay. Then with that, is there a motion for the consent agenda as presented with the removal of the water turnover?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of the water turnover.
Okay.
Support.
There's a motion by Walters and support by Bartlett. Any further discussion? Do a roll call vote.
Walters.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Lyle.
No.
S. Cortaid.
Yes.
M. Cortaid.
Yes.
And Friend.
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll move on to the business before the township board. We do have the water turnover here. We do have Joe here. Hi, Joe, how are you? So with this water turnover, this is the town line apartments and it is the water turnover. And you'll see that the list of improvements that is being turned over is on page 29 of 114. The items there, did you have some questions on that?
Yes, when I read through the letter from White Trail, I said, we find the project, what was on documents generally conformed to the township standards. And I just want to know what generally conforms to them. Either they do or they don't. Was there an issue?
I believe that's a standard language that we use, generally conform, because we can only check what was checked. So what we check is inconformance. So we would assume that generally everything's inconformance. So, yeah. Yeah.
I think they've used that before, if I'm not mistaken.
I guess I never remember seeing that.
Yes.
Well, sometimes it just, you know, sticks out on you this time.
Yeah, so you take a density test in Spot A and you can't check every inch along the pipe, so.
That was easy enough. I didn't. Never noticed it before.
No worries. I'll go back and double check, too, and just make sure that was on the other ones. If it wasn't, I'll just make sure. Was that from Damian? It was from Damian. I'll always just double check and make sure. Unless you hear from me, then that is what the issue is.
Okay.
Okay. Would you make a motion to approve the sewer? I mean, I'm sorry, the water turnover? Or, okay, motion by Lyle and support by Walters to accept the water turnover for town line apartments. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by no? Okay, great. We will move forward with that. Hold on one second, you guys. I just made a mistake and buried my agenda. How about that? There, there we go. There we go. Got it. Thank you, though. Okay, we will move on to East Bay ambulance. We do have an offer for employment. You will see an updated cover sheet to apologize. There was a typo on there. If you'll notice, I had 3045 instead of 3450. And I was grateful to have that pointed out to me because that makes quite a difference, right? And so we did have four applicants for the ambulance director position. I did have Chief Mackin was gracious enough to give up an entire day and sit through those interviews with me. And we looked through this. It was his recommendation and I concur that Barb will be a good director for East Bay ambulance. Also, in particular, and I think I mentioned this, excellent service to patient, dedication to fellow colleagues, which really came out, and also a continuity plan from where we're at. And as well as we move forward, we'll continue to have more of a continuity plan than we had in existence before. So that way, hopefully Barb will be with us a long, healthy period of time. But, you know, if not for whatever reason, then we'll have a continuity plan in place. But we talked about the discussion quite a bit and, I'm sorry, we talked about the discussion. We talked about the position quite a bit. And this was the offer to Barb for advancement and this is what I'm looking to have ratified by this board. Are there questions?
I only have one.
Sure.
This would be an hourly position, not a salary position.
Correct.
Correct. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there, if there's no questions, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to offer the advancement to Barb Porzma.
Support. Motion by M. Cortaid, support by S. Cortaid, to concur with the offer of advancement to Barb Porzma. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by no? Okay, thank you very much. All right, with that, Barb, we are taking the disposal of the surplus ambulance off of the table because
We need it now.
We need it now. And we're not sure exactly when the other ambulance will be repaired. Obviously, we'll be contacting insurance and getting that replaced. But as you guys know, the lead time on ambulances is quite some time, so it just depends if we can get one that's, they have some that might be available quicker, but we'll have to see if it kind of meets our needs. We want to make sure our paramedics and EMTs are on rigs that are similar to their other rigs that they're working on for us. I gave you analogy, I don't want them going from an apple to an android or an android to an apple from one run to another, one shift to another. So we'll make sure that whatever we end up getting is as close as we can as possible to that for them. So there will be more information on that coming up to date. Yeah, so I guess we'll leave it at that because I did remove it from that, the agenda. So I don't want to go too much further into that, but just want to bring you up to speed. With that, thank you for being here tonight. I know you're, you've got, you're on shift, right? Okay, thank you, we appreciate it. Thank you, we look forward to you being the director. It's been great working with you. Claire, we'll move on to the zoning amendments. If you'd like to walk us through those?
Okay, good evening, everyone. I know that we had the introduction last month for zoning amendment four dash twenty-five for temporary dwelling units, for zoning amendment five dash twenty-five for impervious surface definition, and for zoning amendment six dash twenty-five accessory dwelling units. So I have introduced them last month, provided a little bit of background information. I am happy to answer any questions this evening, but those three zoning amendments, four twenty-five, five twenty-five, and six twenty-five, you have the opportunity to adopt this evening. The last one, the seven dash twenty-five steep slopes, after we get through these, I'll go into a little more detail on the steep slopes. This is just an introduction tonight for the steep slopes amendment. So I'm happy to answer any questions related to the first three.
Any questions on which, which one are you gonna?
Well, actually, on all three. I just want to know if there were any changes made after the meeting.
You know what? I think that there were to one of them, and I think I have it highlighted in the staff report because I think that Mindy found a typo somewhere. Let me, let me look back.
Essentially, it's the same, but it has that updated, correct?
You know what? Yep. So for the impervious area definition, Mindy noticed that runoff was one word and off-site was two words and suggested taking a look at that. And I see now that I did not, I fixed it in one place and not the other. So that would be, and we could certainly make that change tonight and still adopt it, but that was the only, the only change that we were looking at.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Glenn?
Temporary dwelling units. Now, just so I understand, there's going to be no permits required?
Unless it's, unless it's a longer term. You can get a permit for like 180 days if you're remodeling your house, new home, construction, fire, those types of things.
But how do we control how long are there? Can somebody complain and we'll address it?
Yep, yep, it's complaint based and enforced through that method, as well as the zoning administrator being out and about in the community and noticing.
And we do have, I mean, we do have a lot of things that are done the same way. So for example, a vehicle that's not functioning, right? If that's in the yard, when did that get there? Is it functioning, is it not? Very similarly, we don't necessarily know about that until we're alerted to that, too. Other questions on either of the four, five, or six? Okay, would you like to take these one at a time for the zoning amendment four dash twenty-five temporary dwelling units? Are there questions, comments, or a motion?
Make a motion to approve zoning amendment four dash twenty-five temporary dwelling units.
Okay, is there support?
Support.
Okay, there is a motion by Bartlett and support by M. Cortaid. Let me see, we, we'll do this, we'll do this by roll call. Ann?
Bartlett.
Yes.
M. Cortaid.
Yes.
S. Cortaid.
Yes.
Walters.
No.
Lyle.
No.
Cook.
No.
Friend.
Yes.
Four to three. Passes.
Okay, very good. Thank you, everybody, for your work on that, not only here at the board, but also at the Planning Commission. Zoning amendment six dash twenty-five accessory dwelling units.
Or five.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Five, zoning amendment five dash twenty-five impervious area definition.
And I would just say that I'm gonna, I will, I, we'll, we'll have everything one word, so runoff, I think Mindy was noticing that off-site was one word. Mindy, do you want to, do you want to clarify the?
So off-site, onsite, and stormwater are, are, are many times used as two words, one word hyphen. They are all acceptable as long as they're the same throughout the document. Whatever you use, you use it through the same thing. And that's what I was pointing out is that
So we've got stormwater is, is two words everywhere, correct?
Yeah, I think so.
So I think I did make that change.
But I was just using it as a
Yeah, and then the other issue was that the off-site is two words and onsite
Is one word.
You've got runoff is one and off-site is two.
I think onsite is one word, so you need to just be the same.
And again, I, I see those as like administrative typo.
I just wanted to get clarification on, on the direction of the board, but I'll make sure they're consistent.
Okay, that sounds good. Are there other questions or comments on five twenty-five impervious area in stormwater or is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve zoning amendment five dash twenty-five impervious area in stormwater. Support.
Okay. Motion is made by Walters and supported by Bartlett. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call, Ann?
Walters.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Lyle.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
M. Cortaid.
Yes.
S. Cortaid.
Yes.
Friend.
Yes. Okay, with this, we'll move to zoning amendment six dash twenty-five accessory dwelling units. And with this one, comments, questions, or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve zoning amendment six dash twenty-five accessory dwelling units.
Hey, there's
Support.
Okay, Walters, support by Bartlett. Are you supporting that?
Yeah.
Okay. Walters, support by Bartlett. Any further discussion? And roll call.
Walters.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Lyle.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
M. Cortaid.
Yes.
S. Cortaid.
Yes.
Walter, no, okay, Friend.
Yes. Okay, so we'll move on to zoning amendment seven twenty-five, steep slopes introduction.
Okay. So this one, the Planning Commission has been working on for the last few months. A little bit of background, our ordinance from kind of pre-2023, the zoning ordinance had some limitation on construction on steep slopes. And they define steep slopes from 50% all the way up to 80%, prohibited any development at 80%. That was, you know, severely kind of outside of what is practical and reasonable because nobody's going to build on it like an 80% slope. So we kind of realized, wow, it needs to be significantly lower than that, the threshold for a steep slope to better protect, you know, erosion, natural features. And so kind of in working through our zoning ordinance subcommittee, the number 15% came, was recommended, it kind of gained traction. There was some advocacy from some of the, you know, environment, from an environmental standpoint, there was some advocacy for that 15%. I think that there was an adequate research done behind the 15%. We kind of just went with, there was an Eagle Staff at the time that, that kind of went with that, and so we kind of stuck with that 15%. As we kind of worked through the ordinance, required anything above 15% to re, to, to have like geo, geotechnical engineer going in for soil borings, just to make sure that there was slope stability. We found that there was a lot of expenses incurred and not necessarily, the, the finding was never, oh, you can't build on this 15% slope. So they were always able to build on that slope, but the private property, single-family homeowners were incurring a lot of expenses for that. So we did quite a bit more research. We looked at a lot of other ordinances across the state of Michigan, also regionally. We talked with, you know, the Watershed Center with our township engineer. Soils and Structures, which is a geotechnical engineer, was kind enough to provide us some, some input. We talked with the Drain Commissioner, the Grand Traverse County Health Department, and kind of arrived at probably like 20 to 33% was much more appropriate. And so Planning Commission ended up kind of settling on 25%. One nice thing about the 25% as a threshold is that the, there's an online soil survey and the category goes to 25%. So we can, that's one of the kind of cutoffs, so we can kind of see physically what areas are 25% and up and what areas are under 25% to kind of just get a general lay of the land for specific locations in the township. You'll see that the draft amendment keeps most of the language as is in our, in our current ordinance, just makes some minor modifications. And what we do is we define steep slopes as anything of 15, anything from 15% to 25%. And then we define very steep slopes as anything greater than 25%. So you'll see those kind of more rigorous standards that were previously associated with the 15% are now associated with the 25%. So we've worked with our township engineer and others to kind of refine this language. We also used, I think it was Benzonea, was it Benzonea Township, as a kind of example. And so that's, that's the draft language that we have before you tonight. The Planning Commission reviewed it and unanimously recommended this version at their meeting last week.
What's the, I see the, kind of the definition of steep slopes in here, but we're going to get too granular here, but is, is there too much vagueness in like dimensionally where the slope would occur? I mean, couldn't you have, could you have a 10-foot section that had this slope and then the remainder of the area be relatively flat? Is that considered a steep slope area? Is it over a certain?
Yeah, so a little bit of that is a, is a judgment call. It's really only focused on where you're going to be, where you're going to be disturbing the site. So, you know, generally, you're kind of looking at the average. Mindy can maybe speak to it a little bit more, but we're kind of, we're relying on their, their engineer and there's a site surveyor to make a judgment call. There's some areas where there's, you know, they allow for up to 20% of the area, like so say there's a steep slope, say you're impacting, you know, a certain area of it, you can maybe disturb 20% of the steep slopes. Granted, you know, X, Y, and Z are taken care of, so. So I don't know if it's an exact science, especially because a lot of these are single-family property owners, but I think Bill, over the last few years, has gotten a pretty good sense of, of slopes and, and steepness. And we do have some tools to be able to better estimate. And if that, if it is kind of right on that verge, then we can, then we can get the, get a survey and make sure that we have the accurate contours to evaluate that.
So does this pertain just to building the structure or the driveway, too?
Driveway, too.
Even the slopes on the side of the drive?
So the, let's see, we have some specific requirements. So like, for example, if you're in that, that steep slope, so like 15, 15 to 25% slope, then it says, you know, the alignment of roads and driveways shall follow the natural topography to the extent possible and shall minimize regrading. So again, it's a little bit of a judgment call to kind of identify
Well, 25% slope is not much of a slope in my book when you're talking about building a driveway where you're going to cut and fill. You know, if you look at the road commission, where they cut and fill, they're using closer to 100%, right? Because the 25% is for every one foot rises, four foot out. Well, that's, I don't see that as
Yeah, so you can build a driveway on a steep slope.
So, you know.
And we're just looking for the driveway to be kind of designed with the contours of the land to the extent possible.
I don't know. I don't know, because it's, the way I read this is, I wouldn't have my house where it's at because I couldn't put a driveway in there.
You wouldn't have your house there?
Not under these. If I, if I had to be a 25 or 33% slope, it just would not fit. I mean, it was, and so we've had to fill in the drive to, to make it work. And there's only one corner it can come in on, so it's, it just would not have been feasible.
So I mean, for, so say you, say you were on a slope and your driveway was coming somewhere that was 33% grade. You would go to, that'd be considered a very steep slope regulation. So it says grading for a portion of driveway accessing a single-family dwelling unit when it can be demonstrated that there's no other route which avoids the slope exceeding the 25% as reasonable or possible. So I think in your instance, the zoning administrator could make a judgment call and say, yep, that seems to be the most reasonable location.
Well, I, I do take issue with the first statements that the 50% and everything was wrong, because I don't think it was. I think it's just being looked at from a different angle and not the, the angle of the actual possibility of somebody building something, you know? It's nice to build on a flat You know, it's, it's nice to build on a flat lot, but there aren't that many flat lots around. And, um, like again, 25% is not much slope. I don't see where that's considered a, a steep slope.
So just for clarification, the, the old ordinance was the, the 50 to 80%. The ordinance that we adopted was 15%. So now we're trying to increase it.
Right.
Because we felt that it was not, not appropriate.
Just trying to hit the hetero of this, but if maybe people don't build walkout basements, that would be, your slope would be more than 25%, correct?
Mm-hmm.
But what would they do in that case? They don't know?
I mean, they, they still can and they would need to get a, a geotechnical engineer involved. And so it's, it's expensive to, to take a look at the, the soil and, and make sure that there's, that you've got the stability.
Do you get many permits for single-family homes that are walkout basements? They used to be pretty common.
Yeah, I mean, I know, I know with the Holiday Forest phase two, there's going to be quite a few of those.
Well, there was one up here that had issues. There was like flooding and stuff because it washed out.
Where was that?
Their walkout, out of the three mile.
Was it down, down near the three mile and Holiday?
Yeah.
Right.
Up that way, yes.
Oh, yeah, right, that way, sorry. Sorry, I was...
Mind your point.
Yeah, that way.
Yes.
But I thought there were other issues there.
I don't know what it was concerned, but I mean, it, they had a lot of problems.
Yeah, I think there were other mitigating issues.
Yeah.
There.
I don't know, I just know it was a huge...
Wouldn't that just require retaining walls? Because you'd have to have a retaining wall to keep the soil away. I don't know.
But that's, that's, that's not the intent of this ordinance. The intent of this ordinance is just stormwater runoff protection. Waterfall.
Yeah, and I would say the majority of the areas where we're seeing a desire to build on steep slopes is in the lakes area.
Yeah.
That's right, yeah.
So has this pertained just to the lakes area or the whole township?
It pertains to the entire township. Because again, you know, um, there are also sites that are heavily wooded that are steep. And so this provides some level of protection to, you know, large-scale development and some of those, not keeping development from going on those sites, but having them be done in a more sensitive way.
Well, again, I, what I see, the way it's, the way it's written, it just seems too restrictive and it just causes a, a lot of expense for anybody that has this lot that has some slope to it. You know, even a 50% slope lot, you build a house with a walkout basement and whatever, and then they have to have a survey and everything else done. I mean, they've been built that way for 100 years. It doesn't, and, and I don't think you're going to find there's that many issues. Usually there are other issues that cause it. And I just, I just don't, I just don't like what I see. I, I know that you're trying to expand it, make it better than it was written, but I think, um, we didn't go far enough.
I think what was in here that we're amending, the, the language that's in the amend, in the zoning now, that's all within the new zoning ordinance and came through our process that we did with the subcommittee and then the Planning Commission and then the Township Board. Didn't you, I'm trying to remember, when you were going through trying to figure out the exact expense that this would be for potential households when they're building, I thought you, that you had talked with the geotechnical engineers and could come up with some maybe more defined...
Kind of, yeah.
Cost and what would need to be done to show. What, did we ever have an idea of how much that was?
Yeah, I mean, I think the initial investigation was maybe like, like $1,500. And that was, would cover most properties, $1,500 to $2,000. When they didn't, they, that would be not having to do like the soil borings and stuff, so...
But what are they trying to determine with that? I mean, this is, soil boring is really going to come up with what, like a structural...
That's all they're look, that's all that they're really looking at, yeah.
How, how does that tie into, I, I just don't see how that's really like providing any benefit to the intent of what's described here with runoff, right?
Yeah, so I think that there is a desire to have some level of flexibility to allow people to develop on their property, but we're, we're kind of trying to figure out like what, what that mechanism is to allow to, you know, you know, we could say you can't, you can't develop on a property in excess of 25%, but there's always instances. And so I think that the, you know, geotechnical engineer can kind of inform kind of a, a better design or kind of how it can be done to limit, limit, um, slope failure that, that impacts runoff and those types of things.
I mean, I see it more, I guess, from a runoff standpoint. I see it more of an issue obviously during construction. And you know, like the language here that says, uh, disturbances of steep slopes shall be completed within one construction season. And vegetated cover in areas of exposed soil shall be planted within five days after completion of final grading. Couldn't, couldn't you make the argument that you were developing, developing a piece of property that you could clear everything out, do your construction, claim that you never did final grading and let it sit during the wet season and just sit there runoff for a year or a year and a half and did you complete it final grading? I mean, that, that seems like the more, the more practical risk around runoff is scenarios like that where, you know, like I think of like the, uh, the, um, the development over here by the, by the golf course on the corner of Powell Line. And they took what was, already had a slope, I don't know, I don't know what it was, it probably would fall in the, maybe the steep slope regulations and then they terraced all of the facility, but they actually created a bunch of very steep scenarios throughout the property. And it come, fall in the wet season, they were getting runoff. It was, it was washing out that whole entire hillside. And they didn't fix that until, you know, the next spring. So all the damage is done at that point. It's fine now, but I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, the intent is certainly to make sure that it's planted and restabilized as soon as possible while kind of acknowledging factors that, that limit a contractor from immediately replanting. So be open to other language, but this was also kind of in working with the Watershed Center.
Mindy, did you have any comments, particularly since being on the Planning Commission?
I don't know, I have, don't, um, I will say that the 1,500 to 2,000, the, the geotechnical engineers are not going on property, they're just looking at, you know, what is readily available information about the soil in the area. But basically, you're just looking at soil classifications and the type of failures for which those soils can, can indeed fail.
So what is the pleasure of the board?
So we're just, this is just an introduction, but...
It is, but I...
Yeah, so if there, if there's concerns kind of by a majority of the board, we could always send it back to the Planning Commission or, so just, yeah, it doesn't need to, you don't need to take any formal action tonight, but just helpful to get the feedback.
Yep, what's the pleasure of the board?
I mean, I, I think, I think send it back, I mean, this is just my, my personal opinion that, um, the, to, to Mindy's point, the, the desktop review that somebody's going to pay for and then subsequently pay potentially a lot more for soil borings, probably not going to give you, it's probably not going to change the scenario to your point, right? You're not going to spend much money that's, you know, if you argue that it's going to be feasible. Wouldn't that money be better spent in, to, to achieve the stated goals of the background here? Wouldn't it be better spent to maybe bolster up some of the requirements around soil erosion control around the site or something, something along those lines? You know, if, if you're going to, if you're going to have some requirements here that are actually going to yield benefits for the purpose that's stated here, wouldn't that be more beneficial than just have...
So right now, we have the soil erosion permit through Grand Traverse County.
Right.
We could talk with them, but, you know, we're a little hesitant to be, kind of get involved in that since that's kind of a...
It's, that's theirs to enforce. It's their ordinance and it's theirs to enforce the likelihood of them changing it because it's prob, I'm sure it's probably uniform across the district that they, that they serve. So they wouldn't include Garfield because Garfield does their own soil erosion, but...
Yeah, that's, that's just my opinion. I mean, it, it seems like the more pragmatic approach, if you're going to try to actually achieve some meaningful impact.
Have specific standards related to, not necessarily soil erosion, but planting.
Yeah, planting or, or, yeah, runoff management during construction. And just, just anecdotally, that's what I see driving around through our township and the area is that everything's kind of standard, right? It's like, especially on some of the steep, you know, properties that we're talking about, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a standard weather play requirement for sill fencing and, you know, maybe rain and all that gets overwhelmed and gets knocked over and everything's all fitted and free, so...
Yeah, so I think for the soil erosion piece related to construction, that would be, that would be the county. I think the only way to address that would be if we took over the soil erosion permits.
Question. Wouldn't this just kind of go over and you've got a stormwater and you've got a soil erosion? Isn't it basically going the same thing?
Well, stormwater permit is generally not for a single-family home.
Generally?
Yeah. Soil erosion, often, I mean, it's for every lake property, but it's not for every single-family home, so...
But stormwater...
I think their, their trigger is 33%, but...
A stormwater, if I understand it right, for single-family, if you disturb, well, you've got a one-acre lot and you disturb a half acre of water, you're requiring a head stormwater.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And also, you can't change the way the water flows across roads. You end up, the only problem is you end up with a property owner, two property owners fighting, uh, the ownership.
Right, yeah, yep. So I think, I, I, it's helpful, and, and I hear that, that some of you are looking to send it back to the Planning Commission. I think it'd be helpful kind of whether or not you want us to focus on increasing the threshold, you know, we did talk about 33% as a threshold. Or if you're looking for kind of something more specific to vegetation and, and other means.
I, I guess what I would, what I would ask for is, is, I don't, I don't see the direct correlation between the purpose of the change and what the actual change is. You know, it seems like they're, they're not necessarily connected.
Yeah, no, I can understand that. I think part of the challenge is if we don't have anything, then, you know, people can come into lakefront property or environmentally sensitive area and kind of just build wherever they want. I think this puts a mechanism in place at least where there's, there's some consideration for that, both from a financial standpoint as well as from a practicality standpoint.
Well, would it, would it be practical to have this applied only to those environmentally sensitive areas?
We could do that.
To best the intent?
But I do think that a steep slope kind of makes it environmentally sensitive, especially on a larger scale development site that is, you know, heavily wooded. If you're, if you just kind of go and develop it without a lot of consideration for the topography, then you, then you get a, a result that, that likely residents wouldn't be happy with based on our input and master plan process.
I, I, um, you know, as I said, it went through the, the steering committee, the, the Planning Commission and to the board. So I'm, I'm inclined to, if there were a motion, I would vote for it. But personally, I, I do feel like, um, I mean, I lived in West Virginia for six years. I don't think we have steep slopes here, but I know that that's not an accurate comparison. But I, I would look for maybe, if I, if this didn't go forward, I'd say maybe looking at, um, it either in the areas where it's going to particularly be an issue or, or look at that, that slope to be a higher threshold. But again, like I said, if there were a motion, you know, this is what's come through that process and, and I'm fine with that. Um, Trace?
This is looking at what we end up with, correct? Not during construction.
Yes, but there are a few provisions that require, you know, to be planted within five days and...
Right. Which would be during construction, but some of that, I mean, the construction portion of it is going to be soil erosion. And so we're looking at what you end up with after construction. So, so yeah, I mean, I'm okay with this. If you want to make it a higher threshold, that's fine. But I think what you end up with is the, the product that we're trying to get to, not during the process of...
Sue?
I'm taking everyone's comments in. I appreciate that we are revisiting this, that it was determined that a no-slope wasn't going to be acceptable for our topography as a jurisdiction. We're not one big neighborhood and one flat piece of property. There are many different zones and many different situations and criteria. So I'm, I'm glad we have the opportunity to send it back for a little more modification. Whether that is by zones, I don't know. Because, you know, I, I just go back to the fact that we're not just one subdivision where everything is the exact same thing.
What would you prefer to see happen to this?
You know, I don't have that answer, Beth. There, there's been a lot of discussion here tonight by folks that think one or the other. You know, it sounds like if it was just the lakes, that's one option, but then you've mentioned that the people that live with the slopes in the woods, that's another issue. Or those that live on rolling hills or try to develop a rolling hill that was a farm area, um, there's going to be different criteria. So maybe just in general, a more of a slope adjustment.
Yeah, I have seen, I think it was Garfield Township had kind of some more general requirements for development. So maybe it wouldn't apply to single-family homes, but it was kind of more, you know, when you're developing like a site condo or something like that, here's the, here are the requirements. So we could look at something that was maybe limited to like the environmentally sensitive areas, near water, wetlands, et cetera, for single-family and then maybe take a little different approach with a development site. So that'd be another option.
I think it would be worthwhile to do that, deeper dive.
So would you prefer to see it sent back for consideration?
Yeah.
Glenn, you would prefer? Hey, Mindy, you're fine with either? Okay. And Matt, you'd like to see it sent back?
Yeah.
Okay, Sue?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So we're, Tracy, doesn't, you're here. All right, so we've got, so we'll send this back. There's consensus.
Okay, that sounds, sounds good.
Not to move it forward for introduction. Okay, thank you, everybody, for...
Can I ask one sort of parallel unrelated question? When it comes to some of these larger developments where there's, um, storm runoff infrastructure that's required to be built in like retention, I can see a lot of, who, who's the authority that keeps track of that inventory of that infrastructure and is there any type of inspection requirements or...
That's Joe.
Okay.
No, so Wade trim permits, the, the stormwater permit, and then at the end, there's a closeout. So part of that is the, you know, the civil engineer provides kind of sealed plans that's been built according to the plan set. Wade trim is the opportunity to go out on site and do an inspection and then they close out the system. In terms of the maintenance... the maintenance, that's not, I mean, obviously, we don't have like a stormwater system where things are connected, so they're all site specific. But the maintenance is if issues arise on a case by case basis, then we deal with that. But there's no.
So there is no maintenance required?
There is a maintenance requirement.
I think there's a maintenance requirement.
Yeah. So there is a maintenance requirement, but the township is not inspecting it. It's looked at on a case by case basis.
There becomes a problem with one of the stormwater, say it's logged up, filled in, wasn't kept, and that becomes an issue against what was permitted and allowed and agreed to by.
Yeah. But Wade Trim does review the maintenance plan and approves it per the ordinance requirements.
Okay, with that, we will move on to unless anyone has anything else on any of those zoning ordinance amendments. Okay, we'll move on to the corridor improvement authority appointments. Claire, we saw this last month and we were looking for two additional residents. And so I'm remembering that obviously these people were on this board before and that you've added to. So if you'll just talk to us about that.
Yeah, sure. So we had a number of interest after the last meeting on the corridor improvement authority board. And so we we met with four different individuals that were interested in serving on the board. I would say all four of them were great and we, you know, kind of reached out, let them know that we hope, even if they weren't recommended tonight to serve on the corridor improvement authority board, that they continue to stay engaged. But the two that we're recommending, Alex and Jason, both live in the Pine Grove neighborhood. Part of the reason that we wanted to make sure that we had two residents in the Pine Grove neighborhood is because one of the other neighbors is over on Four Mile and we wanted to have kind of even distribution of residents. So we did have, in particular, one Four Mile neighbor that seemed great. I think should be a good asset to the board. But we did want to have some kind of geographic equity because the Pine Grove neighborhood is larger than kind of the residents over in the Four Mile. And we already had Chris Cargill, who's a Four Mile resident. Both Alex and Jason live in the Pine Grove neighborhood. Alex previously worked in affordable housing, so and kind of has a background in economic development related field. I think did affordable housing financing, is currently staying home with his son. He's got, I think, like a 11-month-old. And then Jason also lives in the Four Mile or the Pine Grove neighborhood, bikes around the corridor a lot, is currently working for Elmer's. So he was working for Elmer's back when they did the 2015 improvements along the US 31 corridor, is currently working on the state park project with Elmer's. And so just kind of has quite a bit of experience, not only as a neighbor, but also just kind of, you know, in the corridor, biking biking to work on a regular basis and kind of from a professional standpoint. So those were the two that we're recommending. You'll see the terms. We have staggered because they're three-year terms and we wanted to have them renewed on a kind of rolling basis. And then for the recommended liaisons, what we're planning on is having them, this group will meet quarterly and kind of advise on infrastructure, other projects related to the US 31 corridor on an as needed basis. And really, we wanted to just make sure we have really good partnerships right now from, you know, Beta, TART Trails, MDOT, the Land Conservancy. So we really wanted to find a way to keep them engaged. But having them kind of in this non-voting advisory role, we thought would work well. And they're all seem enthusiastic about staying engaged.
Okay, with that, does anybody have any questions related to this? Sure, Mindy?
Not necessarily on this group, but I was wondering if we have a liaison in the city. Because so that we can get coordination maybe in the city and the township since we were talking about that.
Mm-hmm. You know, I've talked with city staff a fair amount. And we do have, I think, a few, let's see, people liaisons that live in the city, but we don't necessarily have a city representative.
I mean, I do think we have some liaisons here who are highly involved with the city. So say, for example, Beta with Bill Clark, he has a high level of understanding of what's going on in the city because their routes are often through primarily through there. And as well, Maxwell Cameron with Grand Travers County. Doesn't he sit on the, is that the City Planning Commission? He sits on the City Planning Commission. So I think that that's a good tie-in through there as well.
So those are the two things that come to mind when I.
I just.
But we could, I mean, we could always, yeah, we could always have. I mean, I think that also brings up Acme Township. I think both would be good to coordinate with, so.
I have no problem with people. I just think that.
Mm-hmm. Have continued conversations. Yeah. I think there are definitely some opportunities for for connectivity to with the city.
I think that that is something to keep in mind. I think with eight members and nine members here, we're getting pretty, pretty large. Yeah. So I'd like to see, myself, I'd like to see us start with this. And then I think that staff also does a good job with connecting with the other jurisdictions. So I think, and then with those couple of members that I mentioned. Start there and see how that goes. But I think that that's a good, a good comment because we are always trying to work cooperatively with our neighbors.
Other comments or questions? Is there a motion?
A big motion to approve the recommended CIA board numbers along with the terms of services element in the table provided as all this of the liaisons to the CIA.
Is there support?
Support.
There's a motion by Walters with support by Cook. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by no? All right. Very good. We have a corridor improvement authority. We will move on now to the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund grant agreement. This the Natural Resources Trust Fund agreement is definitely in application process for the patient jurisdiction. But we're always happy when we are awarded. This was the 2024 award. So this was awarded almost a year ago. But it does have to go through the legislature, which doesn't really please the DNR trust fund because it's actually written into the the constitutional framework for this. But be that as it may, that's the process. So it takes a while. And then, of course, the governor has to sign it. They've done that. And now all of the agreements go to all of the people who were awarded this. This is the Three Mile Trail project. This is what was called Segment One, if you recall, and which is that short piece coming from the terminus of the Three Mile Trail to the new trailhead. And it is a $400,000 grant with a match of 627,300. And that match is the federal appropriation that TART has received from the feds that they have. So with that, we need a resolution agreement to enter into the developmental project agreement. This is slated for a 2027 construction. We just talked with TART today and confirmed that. So resolutions do start with Resolution 26. So this would be Resolution 25-26. Are there questions on this? It does say budget implications. We've already dedicated the $1 million in Three Mile Trail development. So this project or the grant development agreement requires us to do any further allocation than that. The flow of funds will be affected, though obviously we'll be receiving the $400,000 and obviously we'll be, yeah, we're going through all of those flows of funds because there's so many sources of funds going into this large project. So that is the state of this grant application. And we would be seeking approval of Resolution 2025-26, which approves the DNR trust fund project grant agreement for Award 24131, known as the Three Mile Trail Extension. Are there questions on this? Yeah. Mindy?
Department is used, and I assume it goes back to.
It it does.
But department is never defined in our resolution, is it?
It's defined in their agreement.
But shouldn't it be defined in our resolution?
Let's see, we could do that. Where's the first place that it's used? Here, let me see. I took the verbiage from there. So we will put.
I think we can put department after Michigan Natural.
Mm-hmm.
Department of Natural Resources.
Trust Fund, yes. Yep. We can do that. Want to look at one thing on the agreement. There, the DNR is the department. So.
Yeah. So we don't ask this one, we just put department in front of the C's after the.
Well, it is their the DNR trust fund grant application, though. So as approved by.
So right here. There's the Department of Natural Resources and then put department in front.
Yep. That works. Yep. Thank you.
I don't know if anybody else is following me, but in the.
After the resolved?
Yeah.
I was thinking you were talking about the second whereas.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah. Yep. So it would be after the first resolved, where it does say Michigan Department of Natural Resources, because that is distinctly different than the trust fund board. So all right, that would be Resolution 2025-26 with the change of identifying the department after the MDNR.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-26, a resolution approving the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Development Project Agreement for Grant Award TF24-0131, known as Three Mile Trail Extension with a modification identifying the department after as the Michigan Department of Natural Resources.
Is there support?
Support.
Okay, there's a motion by Bartlett. I'm sorry, a motion by Walters and support by Bartlett for Resolution 2025-26. Further discussion?
Yeah, just one clarification. You said this is a 2027 project. Are there opportunities for extensions of this agreement? Because I guess they've got a 1031 2027 part day.
Typically, yes, they will. They will work with you on that. The DNR, for example, when we did the Holiday Woodlands natural area, there were mitigating factors there with COVID and so forth. But yes, they will, when you go to their trust fund meetings every year, they'll talk about an updated grant tracking that they have. And usually the ones that they eventually write off, so to speak, or put the money back into the fund are pretty aged and they worked with those grantees to see, you know, where they're at with it. And it's been some time. So I have seen them work considerably with with those who who have their their grants. And they are, they're pretty excited about the Three Mile Trail. We've had some good news for the MDOT and on some funding issues and that have allocated, done a conditional commitment. So it's something that we can broadcast or anything like that. But we have some conditional commitment of seven figures. And the trust fund was aware of that at the last meeting and like was very excited about it. So we're hopeful and knocking on wood this year as well. Any other questions? Okay, we'll do a roll call. Ann?
Walters.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Lyle.
No.
M. Cortaid.
No.
S. Cortaid.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
And Friend.
Yes. Okay, great. We will move on to the Safe Routes to School contract addendum for engineering proposal. Claire, you want to highlight this?
Sure. This is just kind of in working with Connie at Prine and Newhoff and trying to kind of make sure that we've got the 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 contract that represents the full, full scope of services that they're providing. And so we we previously had not included the landscaping, just because with the Safe Routes to School grant, that did not include the landscaping. But with the RAP grant, the the MEDC revitalization and placemaking, we have the opportunity to do landscaping. And I think the the big benefit for that is that we are taking out trees with the private property owners. So we have the opportunity to cover the costs of replanting trees in the areas that we've removed them, as well as some placemaking along that corridor to have to have landscaping. So this covers the cost of the landscape architect to do the landscaping plan, also includes the coordination for the Civic Plaza, and will basically get us all the way to the bid letting. So our last contract will be for them to do the construction engineering of the of the of the project. But this will get us like all the way to putting a shovel in the ground. And it's $17,800 to be covered through that RAP grant.
The next part is the project management after.
Yes. Yep. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Any questions regarding this contract with Prine and Newhoff? And I think you foreshadowed this last month, right? When we did the.
Probably.
Wetlands?
Yeah.
Any questions regarding this? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a Prine and Newhoff addendum to design proposal landscaping enhancements for Safe Routes to School project as detailed November 5, 2025 proposal.
Is there support?
Support.
Okay, there's a motion by Cook and support by Walters. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by no?
No.
We'll do a roll call. Ann?
Uh, Cook.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Lyle.
No.
Bartlett.
Yes.
S. Cortaid.
Yes.
M. Cortaid.
No.
Friend.
Yes. Okay, motion passes and we will move on to Live a East Bay Trail Connection Engineering Proposal.
Okay. We've got Joe Slonecki here to answer questions. We we have engaged Wade Trim. So this is a trail segment that will begin at the terminus of the Safe Routes to School, which is right at Chartwell on the south side of Hammond Road, hug the south side of Hammond Road all the way to Four Mile, and then connect to the trail that's along Four Mile as a part of the Live East Bay development. So I think the really cool and and this is being funded by the Brownfield Plan. So the township is a participating partner in that Brownfield Plan and will get reimbursed through the Brownfield Plan after we after we design and construct the trail. I think the cool thing about this trail is that it will connect not only the Live East Bay development, but also Crystal Ridge, Water View Ridge, and the Blue Water View development that's been approved. So it's a lot of homes that will be able to connect safely to the schools, to Olson's, to kind of all of those amenities over here at East Bay Corners, as well as the TART Trail going all the way into town eventually. So it's not a long segment of trail. I think Wade Trim said that it was about a mile. But it has a has a big impact potential. And Joe, you're welcome also to, if you have anything else to say, or Joe's also here to answer any technical questions about it as well. It's $150,000, which is a little more than we were expecting for the design engineering. But there's, as you know, just just east of Chartwell, there's a pretty substantial ravine that we're going to be taking a look at how best to how best to get through that and.
And this was, the board will remember when we were going through the Brownfield process with Alan Ed.
Alan Edwin. Yes.
Thank you. I almost said Alan Edmund with the shoes. Alan Edwin. That this was in that Brownfield when we knew, when we recommended it to the county and when it went through the Brownfield at the county and with the County Board of Commissioners. And written into the development plan. And this just is starting to take take care of this. I will say that in the Brownfield development plan, we are not one of the first reimbursed. They have us toward the end. But we have been discussing this with the Brownfield.
They have us toward the end, but we have been discussing this with the Brownfield, um, staff, and there's an opportunity to potentially, um, utilize the Brownfield Revolving Fund to reimburse us earlier, and then they would take the reimbursement later into the revolving fund. Any questions for Claire or for Joe?
Where is the reminder? You just explained it. Does it go on all the way to Four Mile?
Mm-hmm, yep, and then it'll head north down Four Mile to connect to the, um, Live East Bay has done a segment of trail along their, um, right-of-way, so. We actually don't have to get that many easements. It's owned by kind of the Chartwell Development, the Grow Low family, and then we have like, two, um, commercial property owners that will be seeking easements from likely, or potentially, right, we can be within the right-of-way, so.
From a cost standpoint, you mentioned that this is covered with the Brownfield Plan. Is there any cap on what that cost is?
Yeah, well, right now, it's written in there at about four hundred thousand dollars. If, if this ends up being over that, I'm unclear as to whether we can amend that. So, I do believe there may be a possibility to amend that, but I am not entirely sure of that, so.
So the engineering chews up forty percent of the cost of the project?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah. Yep, indeed. The other thing is too, we can check to see. Um, I don't, I have not talked with Brownfield staff about this, but I have talked with them about the revolving fund being utilized on some other things, so there may be, is there a potential for some gap funding, um, for, for that from the revolving fund? I don't know. That may be an option as well. Joe, did you have something?
I just wanted to speak on the engineering portion of this. Um, we were looking at the site and where this trail could potentially go. So there's, depending on agreements and partnership with neighboring properties and where you can put the trail, could have a couple of different options. One's substantially more work on the engineering end and building trail, and would likely be some sort of elevated boardwalk running along the road, or some bench cutting next to it. That's, um, like, going to be something substantial. Now, if you can work with the property owners and come to a more, like, easy route where you follow topography, get down into the lower area and work your way back out, that would be something that would be a lot less. So we're just trying to cover our basis to make sure that when you get done with the design, you've got something you can build.
So if you find a way that doesn't take all the work, you'll cut the costs, then?
Of course they will.
I'm just teasing you. I know you can't say that.
It's on record.
You have allowances in here for about thirty-five thousand for geotechnical and acquisition work.
Yeah, so. And that was included in the hundred fifty. So, those are, having done a couple of these geotechnical investigations for these, this kind of work, that's about what it runs in order to get it done, and then the right-of-way acquisition, that one's entirely dependent on the neighbors, so.
I guess the big question is, is this going to be located in a steep slope area or a very steep slope?
The south side of Hammond or Chartwell or Vanderlip is, it's probably a very steep slope.
Any rough order of magnitude on what this will cost to implement?
The trail itself? Um, Tart had a, just a linear foot cost that they've used for our, um, their projects, and it would.
Is that the four hundred thousand?
Yeah, so construction cost was estimated at four hundred thousand. Now, if you were to put a boardwalk across there, it's going to be different than that. So, that, that would, that's just a, a trail down the side of the road with asphalt on it, is.
I think technically the four hundred thousand was supposed to be twenty percent for design engineering plus the.
Yeah.
Cost of construction plus four hundred thousand.
Yeah, um, I, they've been, from my experience, they've been running higher than that.
Well, I was going to say, because this three-mile extension trail we talk about is about two miles, and they want twelve million dollars for that. That's six million dollars a mile. And then your Safe Routes to Schools, isn't that about a two million dollar project for about two miles?
Two point four.
Okay, so that's one point two million dollars a mile, and now we're going to do it for four hundred thousand? I, I'm just confused with the numbers.
The actual just trail portion is about one point eight million.
But still, it's double what we're talking here.
And the three-mile trail, my understanding is there's a tremendous amount of boardwalk, um, going through the wetlands, so that's.
Well, again, you, you mentioned the, the, across the.
The steep slope, yeah.
Vanderlip Creek there.
Yeah.
It's going to be expensive.
Yeah, and I, um, I'm aware of some road projects going on that might change the road and the room in the right-of-way that you have to work with that's coming up here. So there's some consideration and some coordination that needs to happen where everything's going to fit and go.
The other thing, how.
The other, the other thing I'll just mention is that we've talked with Joe and his team about, um, kind of following a procedure that sets us up for applying for TAP grants, so like, for when we're seeking easements, making sure we're recording all of that. There's some engineering stuff that's not that much more costly, but will set us up to apply for federal funding. If needed.
And, uh, in the proposal, our, our plan is to go and walk the route, and try to select a route that's the most feasible, get a kind of a concept and a plan and an estimate for what you're going to be looking at before we do a whole bunch of engineering, so we can have discussions before we get too far along with what this trail's going to look like.
Claire, we've talked about two, um, subsequent Safe Routes to School grants, because I know that the grant coordinator mentioned that to us, like, once we have in our Safe Routes to School, then you can add on to your route through Safe Routes to School.
That would be an option, just with all that residential development there. Um, the other potential, and again, this is just a potential, but the, one of those developments is also looking at a Brownfield Plan that hasn't, that has been approved for site plan, hasn't moved forward yet. I just met with the developer, um, like, a couple of weeks ago, and they're looking at kind of a potential workforce housing development with the Brownfield Plan that could, that we could wrap into this.
Claire?
When you're talking about funding and finding that, what about, I, you know, right where the city, they have a ton of marijuana, and people are, and they're asking people to put in the.
Oh, the county.
In the spread.
The county.
Oh, to apply? Nonprofits can apply.
They won't let.
We could get Tart, we could get Tart to apply for, on our behalf.
That is true.
Is the, uh, the engineering cost reimbursable if the project doesn't move forward?
Yeah.
So we can go through this Brownfield, we'll reimburse the township, and we say, hey, it's four million dollars. That's a, like, ten-year goal that we're trying to achieve, but we get reimbursed for what we put into it.
I don't know that they have said that they would not. Do you believe that is part of your cost?
They have confirmed that they'll reimburse for engineering.
Even without an actual condition?
I didn't ask about that.
Would that be at the end? I mean, how, because you said, the other way, it's at the end of the project.
So, this was the first time we had added this to a Brownfield, so we didn't really know what we didn't know, right? And so, when they added us, we were one of the last funding to be reimbursed, so there's like a ten-year lag. So, um, I was talking with Ann Jameson about that, and she's like, well, Beth, we can, I said, that's kind of a, that's a tough one. And she said, I think we can, I think we can help with that, she said, with the revolving fund. Because what we'll do is we'll, we'll fund the reimbursement with that, and then they take our reimbursement at those, those later marks. Yep.
Be nice if we could get her to put it in writing.
Well, I mean, all of these things happen by having discussions with people.
Of course.
And then following up with that stuff.
Of course.
Just thinking about your route, I'm sorry, this may be not the time, but when you get to Four Mile, you want to go north on the west side of the road?
We, so there's only three crossings at Four Mile.
Because I remember the road commission person saying it wasn't safe to cross on the west side.
Yeah, so we want to be on the west side, but the, the, um, in the, the trail user will have to cross, will have to do three crossings to get over from the north, yeah. But, I mean, the benefit too is that they can access all four corners, so we, we would see people, you know, using it to access all four corners.
My bet is that most of them won't.
They'll go across on the west side. Part of it is education. We're going to be working with Northe to get some education.
Sure.
Okay, what is the board's pleasure with the Wade Trim proposal? Is there a motion?
There is one in there.
Yep.
Should be.
I'll make a motion to approve the Wade Trim proposal for professional engineering services. Hammond Road Trail Design Engineering as detailed in the eleven-hour proposal agreement.
Is there support? I'll support. Motion by Bartlett, support by Friend. And is there further discussion?
Um, yeah, so, just so I understand, there, there's a potential that we would approve not to exceed an, or an estimated fee of a hundred and fifty thousand, potentially at risk, because we don't know either, either at risk to the township that we won't be reimbursed, because we don't know if we don't get reimbursed if the project doesn't move forward, or if we commit to this money, will get reimbursed at some time way in the future, and at the risk of having to follow through with a trail project that could be, you know, significantly higher than maybe what we're, we've got an appetite for.
So, a little bit like, I mean, you've got to work through the process. Same thing that we did with Safe Routes to School. We were awarded, gosh, I think at first it was only, was it eight hundred or a million?
One million.
One million, and we knew that wasn't going to cover it. So here we are doing this work, and we had put, you know, some money, considerable money into the design engineering of it, and it's like, what do we do? So you keep, you keep working that problem, and you keep going after those funding sources, which we've had success with, with, um, we've gotten, in that particular instance, the RAP grant, two foundation grants, and.
And Safe Routes bumped us up by half million.
By half million, exactly. So, you know, that's, that's what we do here as well. Same thing with Three Mile. Three Mile was, where are we putting this trail? How is it going to be? And then we're just continually working and working, um, at that funding piece. And in particular with that, uh, trail, Tart is assisting us with the, with the private piece of it, and also more public funds as well, with the federal grant and going after more, um, additional allocations.
I, I would be, just throwing this out there, um, I would be more comfortable with, um, at least at this point, for this board to move forward with a smaller scope of services to get to like a, like a thirty percent design, like a, like a next gate, so we could at least proceed with something, but maybe not be committed to the full hundred and fifty thousand.
How would that look? What would that look like, Joe?
I, I don't have my work up in front of me, but, um, the, it would probably be right around a third of it. Um, I always, you always say when you're doing your project, like, oh man, or thirty percent and fifty percent of the budget. But, um, getting from that thirty to that eighty is the big lift.
Sure.
It's, that's where getting the nitty-gritty details in. But if we're going to go to a thirty percent, I would be more comfortable starting at a conceptual design, and having some conversations, and talking to the road commission, and looking at where that route's going to go to get an estimate first, instead of going straight to a thirty percent design. Um, and I would probably do that for twenty thousand.
One of the things we can do is, um, we don't have to pass this tonight. I mean, it just depends on the board's views. Did we have a motion on this? Oh, we do, that's right. So we do have a motion on the floor, but, you know, could we, um, could we do, between now and December, you know, talk with Ann Jameson and see, okay, one, if we can, regardless of the project and the timing of it, um, can we move forward with that? Number two, we can look at, um, can the, can the development agreement be amended, um, for the cost? That's another question. Is there, is there funding through the revolving fund as well? And, um, we can then as well bring back a proposal for conceptual as well. Um, I think, you know, I, we found this all the way through COVID. In order to have, get things done, we've got to have the plans, um, to do them. But I don't think that that's a wrong way to go either.
I was just saying, we don't, we don't necessarily bite it all off right now.
Yeah.
And one of the conversations Claire and I had was to go through that conceptual planning and have a discussion about what this is going to look like before we forward with a full on topographic survey and putting a drill rig out there and doing boring, so that was kind of the plan to begin with.
As I recall, um, on the Live, it was a thirty-year Brownfield Plan, and there was a whole lot more money that they wanted to include in the Brownfield Plan, but they couldn't. Like a sixteen-year.
I thought they were twenty-year. I thought they were twenty-year.
Be nice to know for sure.
I think it was the Crimson that was the thirty.
Yeah, well, by statute, they can't, can't be more than thirty years. I'll just put it that way. Statute said it can't be more than thirty years, and we were one of the last people to get reimbursed.
We were at the ten-year mark.
So, mm, what I would like to see is, I would like to see if they are, if the Brownfield Authority is willing to allow us to use the local site remediation fund for monies to pay for this upfront. I would like to see the developer agreement in place that says that we can use those monies now and not get reimbursement in ten years.
So that wouldn't be the developer agreement. That would be an agreement with the Brownfield, but we can talk with Ann about that.
I would like to see that in writing before we sign a contract for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or even twenty thousand dollars. I would like to know what that, um, potential hit is to the township right now.
Well, I don't know that I can get her to agree on something, staff administrative-wise. We would have to agree something, take it to the, um, we'd have to take it to the Brownfield to do that, so. But we can, we can work, we can work with her and see that.
I, I think this is a, if, if the conceptual plan was five thousand dollars, I think that would, you know, I would be okay with that right now, but without having all these other pieces in place, I'm not comfortable with taking the next steps, um, without knowing exactly when reimbursement can be made to the township.
Mm-hmm, we can, we can definitely find out those things, about moving up the reimbursement, about reimbursement should the project never take fruition, um, you know, all of those things. So, um, do you want to?
And then we withdraw the motion.
You want to withdraw the motion?
Sure.
Okay, um. Does that sound reasonable to everybody?
I've, I've got one other, just a clarifying question. Are we, through the development agreement, are we obligated, is the township obligated to put in a trail? Or is it just an option?
No, I don't believe we're obligated to put the trail in. Um, but we have the funding availability to do it. And so, you know, like Claire mentioned, you know, we'll want to, we'll want to check too with this other development that wants to look at a Brownfield, how to coordinate these, because we can utilize both those for the trail to create additional funding, so that there would be hopefully no gap or less of a gap that we would have to take a look at for, um, some different funding providers. But it's certainly a good way to get trails developed, even if it's impartial, um, because we get a huge block of it knocked off, so, like at Crimson, what did we do there? Three hundred thousand? We did three hundred thousand with Crimson.
Shorter, much shorter.
Much shorter distance. But anyway.
The money that was set aside at that property on the corner of Chartwell and Hammond.
We are using that. It's twenty thousand, and we would have stopped at the Chartwell driveway, but we're extending to the edge of their property, and we're using that that got set aside in escrow. We wrapped it into the Safe Routes to School budget, so it's not part of this, it's part of the Safe Routes.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, it's been sitting in the escrow account for a long time.
Okay, with that, so we'll kind of move on with, with those ideas and, okay? All right, with that, we'll move on to, we have the public. All right, with that, we'll move on to the public hearing for the Streetlight Special Assessment District. Tracy?
Yeah, this is the same thing we do every year, just reevaluating the cost of the lighting and, I should say, the increased costs of the lighting from year to year, so that we're covering the cost in those three phases of the business park. So, this, the, the letter and the analysis was all sent out in October to the businesses in the business park. I have heard nothing from anyone. It will go on, if approved tonight, it'll go on the winter tax bill and...
Okay. So we start with, we're on Resolution 27, correct?
Yeah.
So, are there any questions for Tracy before we get started? We will call the public hearing.
Can we do them all at once?
Well, at 8:02, we will start the public hearing for the special assessment districts, for districts 01-1L, 93-2L, and 95-2L. And it's at 8:03, and there is no public present, so we will close the public hearing at 8:03. And then with that, we'll go to the resolutions. The first resolution I have here is 2025-27 for 93-2L. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
There's support?
Or?
Motion made by Cortade, supported by Lyle. Further discussion? Roll call, vote?
M. Cortade.
Yes.
Lyle.
Yeah.
Cook.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
S. Cortade.
Yes.
And Fran.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to Resolution 2025-28 on page 84. This is for Resolution Confirming Special Assessment 95-2L. Is there, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Or?
Moved by M. Cortade, supported by Cook. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote?
M. Cortade.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Lyle.
Yeah.
Walters.
Yes.
S. Cortade.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Fran.
Yes. Okay, our last resolution, 2025-29, Resolution Confirming Special Assessment, 01-1L rule. Is there a motion offered?
Or?
By Lyle, okay. Is there support? By Walters? No, no idea. By Walters, okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote?
Lyle.
Yeah.
Walters. Cook.
Yes.
M. Cortade.
Yes.
S. Cortade.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Fran.
Yes. Okay, very good. Thank you. We'll move on to the next agenda item. We have a vehicle purchase here. Ryan Porty's done the legwork on this. And we went back to a July board meeting where we had talked about the process that the township wanted us to look at, and that was to contact three local auto dealers and to give them some specs and have them come up with some different ones that would be purchased here locally. And I think Sue, you had emailed me about, you know, taking a look at the MI deal, which we can certainly do. I know that lots of times in the past we've places, whether it's the county or metro or so forth, has chosen to go with a local provider, and that's kind of what we had talked about at the board quite some time ago. And so that's the approach that we took. But, you know, we're, we're happy to take a look as well to different ones.
What I shared with you was the spreadsheet for it all, and the recommendation is for the Bronco Sport 2025?
It was 27 or 28?
This one says 32,700, and the MI deal is for 25,870?
Yeah, 20, yeah, 26, yep, or 26,000.
I just, I would, I think if we can get that competitive pricing, we'd be more in a better position. And with our purchase and bid process, I just, when I saw this on Friday night, I went, yeah, that makes sense that we should at least investigate this part of it.
We can, we can do that. It's up to the board's pleasure. We just went with the direction of what the board had mentioned would be workable and got some prices and bringing them back. So, happy for feedback on that.
What, is it the Bronco that have decided on the vehicle or not?
Ryan went and test drove them, and he thought that the Durango and the Equinox, I think it was the Durango, he said he thought was a little bit big for what we needed. He thought that this, the Bronco, he said it felt like it had, you know, would take any, any mud terrain or ice that they're out on or any, or any construction site, you know, pretty well. This is not the large one. This is the sport. So...
I guess my thought was that depending on what government decides they want the type of vehicle, make of it, and then go through the speed purchasing, but get three bids, and if it comes back to local the legislature decided to go local, they don't have to take it.
That's fine. We can absolutely do that. So we will, any other comments or thoughts? Go ahead.
I noticed that this one is 2025, the other two are 2026.
I think the Ford out in Calcasas still has 2024 Ford Broncos on on their, on their, whatever, yeah. They still have 24s in stock.
So, those are the correct years, because he did go back and check them. Because one of them was, was different on an email. But, so I, I do know that he did go back and validate those. Well, we're happy to do that. We, no problem. Does no matter. We can take that and look at it. We can take the Bronco specifically and check it out on MI deal. We can also reach out to Ford dealers in the area as well. We have tried to reach Fox Ford, which has been kind of odd, because, you know, usually they're receptive. We bought the truck through them a few years ago, and, but I don't know what the deal is with that.
It sounded like they hadn't responded yet.
They hadn't, yeah. All right, happy to take a look at that. We'll move on to the upcoming fiscal year audits. This is the current pricing agreement, but the township's audit is expired, so they have offered two different options. One is a one-year and another is a three-year. They do rotate the lead CPA on it so that you're always having an unbiased set of eyes, not the same person for multiple years. And so wanted to see how the board would like to move forward with this.
I think we've gotten late enough into this year with the audits starting early next year. I have no problem doing one year, but I'd like us to go formally out for bids for anything other than one year.
Yeah, and I just asked them for a one-year, but they provided the three-year.
So I guess I would like, I would like to go with one year and then put out an RFP for services and they, and encourage them to bid for that.
That's what we...
There a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll support it.
Motion is made by
Well, there you go.
S. Cortade, supported by whichever one of these. Supported by Lyle.
No, you're the one.
Is there further discussion?
I never thought you'd forget my last name.
So first, it's been a long time. If there's any, no further discussion, then all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by no? Okay, we will get that over to them and get that scheduled. Let's see, we are at our 2026 budget. You will have some items here in front of you. Let's see. There, these are all tacked together with a large clip, and it starts with the cover page that says, this is basically the cover page that you will get next, next month or at a subsequent special meeting, where we typically have the General Appropriations Act, the resolutions for salaries, the wages, the license fees and permits. And what I have included for you tonight, though, is the 101 budget plus the other additional fund budgets that we budget for, as well as the resolution establishing the fiscal year wages. Oh, and then last, there is the special revenue budget. So, kind of walk through this, because I realize that you haven't seen this. You just received this. And special items of interest that we'll see going through the general fund, Fund 101 are, we'll talk about the wages. Wages are solidified. I think when you first saw a similar budget to this in September, I think I used a 3%. They are solidified at 2.8 with the Social Security Administration. There are some adjustments with the assessor, and we have some information on that, what we'll get to, that's attached to the wage resolution. Looking at, with the assessors doing a 4% industry adjustment and a 1% performance adjustment. The office manager changing from part-time to full-time for consistency in resident services, an increase in duties, which includes FOIA, special assessment districts, also some assessing administrative assistance that we've, we've talked about that would allow Isaac to get into the field even more. Capital projects that we have in here, this was written before I was able to go through, well, actually, no, it is in here. Parks, we have it 275. The Parks Commission is requesting, and that will be broken up. You'll see later in a renovation of Jen's Park Bathroom Interiors for ADA compliance and plumbing features. So we've had some issues with the, the toilets in there. I'm trying to think if we've had any sink issues in there, but we've also had some ADA, as well as the floor just kind of seeps in that, that smell, that when we've noticed that we, when we coated the floors over in the other Arbutus, it just doesn't, doesn't get that.
Doesn't permeate?
Yes, yes. So, we're looking at kind of revamping the interior. The bathroom's still in good shape. The building is still in good shape. Yeah.
It was on our desk tonight.
A clip all put together with the spreadsheets.
Is it up on the right, maybe? I have an extra copy, I think. I have an extra copy, because I accidentally printed out one more. Yeah, because see, you've got the
You got this part. What is the top part?
You already took it apart, Glenn. You already took it apart.
I didn't. Well, I guess I did.
That's okay. We got you.
Okay. We got part of it.
The other things, they were doing some minor upgrades to Pine Grove Park and major to
I'm good, Tracy.
You sure?
I'm fine.
Okay, there you go.
Oh, you didn't give one either, huh?
To the Grace McDonald Park. So that's one that they are finishing up the engineering on right now and looking to go to bid relatively soon, I think. Can't remember if it was, my memory's failing me if it was November, late November or January. Elections has 30,000 in election equipment, and then Safe Routes to School and Three Mile Trail. These are all offset by increasing the revenue. So you'll see some pretty big numbers in here. That's because these are some pretty big projects. Including 55,900 that we will use on the engineering, and that will start to draw down on the $1 million that we have put towards the trails. And 50,000 from a foundation grant that was received in 2025. So we received it in '25. It hasn't been spent, so that'll go through to fund balance and then used in the, in the following year. Yes.
Other parts, 275,000. They got prices on what they were, just just the number they figure on cover what they want.
So, they've, this is, we have some general idea on, we have prices, engineering estimates for the larger $225,000 project that they're getting ready to go to bid on. So that project is, and we can get to it a little bit more in the parks if you'd like, but it's that area that is south of the tennis courts, that is north of the pavilion. There's just kind of like some dead grassy area there. That's being renovated into cornhole game area. And then sidewalk enhancements will be not just for that area, though. The sidewalk will be ADA all the way up to the pine, the pickleball court, and then down through the cornhole area and then over to the pavilion, so it'll connect it that way. As well as included is the concrete off the side of the pavilion where they'll put a warming gas fire, outdoor fire pit on a timer that will be used for like a warming area for the sledding hill. So that's what's all included in that, in that portion. And then the Pine Grove and the Jen's Park are at 25,000 each. And with the Grace McDonald, I'm sorry, with the Jen's, Jen's Park, that 25,000, we've talked with the architect who did the bathrooms at Arbutus, and we've talked to him about, okay, go in and let us know all the fixtures and where everything should be from ADA compliance standpoint.
Was it, is Jen's Park, is somebody saying that's not ADA compliant?
Well, the Parks Commission did an ADA audit of all the parks through the disability network, and so they're using that to take a look at what needs to be done. And there were several things inside that bathroom. So then we figured, we'll address those things. We'll address the flooring that kind of the stench seeps into. We'll address that with the coating, similar to Arbutus, and then we'll replace the toilets as well and the sink for, yeah, for better features. So you got to remember, that bathroom's probably now, how old?
It's at least 20.
Oh, it's, it's more than that.
2003, 2004. Jen?
I think that bathroom was before that, wasn't it?
I don't think it was much before. Do you remember?
Oh, no.
That was fairly new when we took office.
It was before you took office.
Yeah.
So that's, that's what they were looking at doing with Jen's. With Pine Grove, what they would like to do is revamp the basketball court, because it's kind of not great, and talking about resurfacing it from like the, kind of like pickleball, you know how you have to resurface those? Well, there's really like no surface there.
I was gonna say, it's just tired.
Just resurface that, put in better nets. Matter of fact, they wanted to put in the nets that can be raised and lowered so that, you know, when there's younger kids, you can lower them a bit. They want to put in picnic benches, some other benches, and then over in the area where like those little ride-on toys are, those things. So they have 25 set aside for that, too. So, some of it, yes, they, they have some general numbers, but I mean, they don't have like the feature of like what they're picking out to put in there, but have been looking at what some of those items are. Let's see. So if we go to the packet that has the 101, ah, I'll just hit some highlights for you. We see pretty much standard revenues. The outliers will be the, the federal revenue grant, which is the Safe Routes to School. And so that bumps that by quite a bit. But most of the rest of these are, are in line with what they were before. You will find in the transfer in, okay? The first one, that is 20,000 and 44,000. We have 20,000 in this year that will be transferring over in 2025. Next year, I was talking with Dawn Lund, and she was like, you need to show some expenses. And I was planning on doing this. Anyway, it was kind of coincidence she brought it up, because the other part of that, the other 24,000, we can legitimately and rightly so should, according to Dawn, charge some of my salary and benefits to the water fund because of the water and sewer fund, because of the amount of time that I spend. because of the amount of time that I spend on those. And so those should incur that cost. And what that does is when we transfer that, it gets, the money will get transferred out, half of that 24, so 12,000 would get transferred out of the water, and 12,000 would get transferred out of the sewer into the general fund to cover that percentage of, of my job, which we estimated at 20%. Sam's is estimated at about 25% for that 20,000. So that's what those transfers in are. The 1059 is the, oh, Claire, I know this was the, 1059 is the $50,000. I'm showing that in here, but it's actually probably going to look different when I talk with the accountant. But what that's showing you is there's the $50,000 from the Rotary Foundation and the 559 that will be coming in from the TART Trail in next year for reimbursement of OHM's contract and 50,000 towards Safe Route to School. So really, when you add up the 1.5 with the federal grant, the, you know, Claire, what we didn't pop in here? Or at least it didn't show. Oh, yes, we did. Here it is. I thought we did, I thought we left it out. See that underneath the 1.5 of the Safe Routes to School, you'll see 796,941. That's another outlier. That is the wrap grant for the Safe Routes to School. So you've got the 1.5, the 796,941. You'll have another, you'll have another 50,000 from a foundation that will come in and other revenues and donations. That's swung through the TART. And then the 50,000 that's in the 1059. And that adds up, too, if you fast forward and flip several pages to page 20, you'll see departments or, I always call it department, anyway. 623, which this is where we show our OHM for Through Mall Trail and our Safe Routes to School expenses. So that 2.5399 is going to be the OHM contract plus the Safe Routes to School. So they, they cancel each other out. The expenses are in there and the revenues are in there. So I did want to explain that rather large project. I am going to make sure and talk with Steve to see how exactly I want to show that, but that's how I'm trying to show it to you now, for right now. Those offset each other. Going back through some of the revenues, you'll see standards of property taxes, PILT funds, you know, summer tax, licenses and permits, franchise agreement, similar items, passport fees, earned interest, you know, other donations, that sort of thing. 30,000 in the Metro Act revenue. So those are things that you are very familiar with seeing, and those are also delineated in the footnotes there. If we move on to the expenses, you'll head next to the 101, and you'll see mating fees have just been adjusted by the 2.8%. Let's see, the some funds in there for legal expense attorney. The consultation services are our Economic Development Traverse Connect contract. And then you'll see that audit number. I put in the one-year audit number, I believe. Is that 24-2 that we just passed?
I believe so.
Yep. So I had put in the number for the one-year contract for the audit. And then our associations, which is primarily MTA. So pretty much standard expenses there that you have seen before. And information in the footnotes that. Tell you the same thing. I will say that audit agreement at 5%, that is actually incorrect. That was from the other. It's an audit increase of 7%. All right. From there, we go into the Supervisors Department, which is 171. We see wages, payroll expenses, standard supplies, education, association memberships, mileage, travel, lodging, meals, and cell phones. Pretty standard, and I would say it's actually pretty much the same as this year's budget, other than the wage difference with the 2.8%.
And we'll get to back out some mileage on all the departments if there's a township vehicle.
If it's available. I mean, you can see, we often are at different classes and so forth.
Right. I mean, I get that it won't always be, but it is something that can offset that expense.
Yep, yep. We move on to the 215. We have salaries, deputies, the federal, you know, payroll expenses, supplies. Those supplies are elevated because Sue has a broken desk in her office and will be looking to replace that broken desk. And the desks are relatively very expensive. When you start to look at office furniture, it's a little bit surprising. Education, association membership dues, mileage, travelage, lodging and meals, cell phones. We are staying away from putting just, we used to put a lot of things in capital outlay that truly aren't capital. I mean, 6,000 for a desk, which actually would be less than that because that includes your regular supplies, too. So when you're looking at like four grand for a desk, it doesn't rise to the level of a capital outlay. So. Supplies in 217, that is passports, right? Okay, passports. 247 is your Board of Review, pretty standard there. 253 is treasurer. And so you have the treasurer and their deputy. You have tax supplies and supplies. Education, association memberships, mileage, travel, lodging and meals. Pretty much your standard that you've seen before. Actually, you are a little bit less this budget than last, and that's because last year you put in the window. That was a little bit more expensive. If you remember that drop-down, that drop-down window. Sorry, I didn't go over that with the clerks, but I'm sure it's probably pretty similar. 162, yeah, so it's, you know, the difference is a lot with yours is just that supply line, so. Which to be expected. Assessing, we have the salaries in here with the Director of Assessing, the Assessing Administrative Specialist. And I will have you go for a quick second to this resolution that is the draft work for the wages. And I'll have you take a look at the attached second page. It's a single page. And this takes a look at some of the rationale and why I'm taking a look at adjusting the assessors. This is the required certification level for all of the jurisdictions. Obviously, East Bay Township is there. You'll see as far as the, it's just interesting to note that none of the townships have changed their SEV needed level, other than Blair, actually. Because Blair's, Blair Harris had some changes there with some larger, you know, the Amazon Center and the, what's the other store? Blair, Blains, Blains, right? But you come over and you can see the Ad Valorem and the commercial. And then when you look, I also layered this with Sue surveys on an annual basis.
I'll share. I have a new one coming.
Oh, good.
Garfield just did a wage study. And they're preparing, providing that information since they changed their whole wage scale and everything.
Okay. Well, what I did was because, what I did, and you'll see that in the first note below. These are in red what I would consider 2026 estimated wages because I looked at when the other wages were reported. And then I would adjust them at what our COLA was for those years. So 2.5 is what we adjusted in 2025, and 2.8 is what we're adjusting in 2026. So these red amounts of salaries are what would be adjusted from what we know. So, let's see, the, if we had the current wage for the, the director, as you'll see, is that top line. And you'll see the wage that would be with just the 2.8%. Same thing for the MCAO. And when you add, put those by comparison, that is lower than if we left that not exactly market where you'd want to be compared to Green Lake, Long Lake, Peninsula, and so forth, not really keeping up with that, that industry, what we're seeing in our, in our general area. And then I also then, and I did the same for the MCAO. And then I also layered this with taking a look at the Michigan Assessors Association has listings every month. And then I would take a look at those listings that come out and what they were looking for, the size of the organization and what the level of certification was. So my recommendation with that is solely implementing the COLA adjustment for those positions leaves them below a competitive level. This, by the way, is not a department that you want to leave below a competitive level. It is very difficult to get assessors. Additionally, during 2025, the dedication to work and the work with residents has been exceptional, which is the basis for the 2.8% COLA adjustment with the 4% industry and a 1% performance adjustment. Then you'll see the resulting wages that they would be, and that is more in line with some of the other townships. It still is subpar for Long Lake and Peninsula Township, but by very little. And I didn't really want to ratchet more than that in a single year. So that is where I came up with those. And those numbers that are at the bottom are put into the 257 department that we're looking at in the 101. Going back to that 101, 257, we have the standard expenses. You'll see there postage, supplies, legal expense attorney, contract service. As we don't have anymore, obviously. Assessing software, we still do. Pictometry has changed and come down because we're, we just pay into the county for that now, and they portion that out for East Bay Township. They do it countywide now, which is fantastic. We have the education right now, which is bumped a little in that 2,000 because we do have, we do have Isaac taking the MAAO class right now. And let's see, and that also is reflected in the mileage and travel and lodging and meals. So his, his class is on Saturday, and he has tests on Monday, and they are downstate. So he stays through Sunday and studies down there and then takes the test on Monday. So all of that is within that budget. And you can see we are slightly more than we are this year, but we are less than, you know, when we had the county there, too, so. And there are some notes in the footnotes there as well. We'll go through the 262, which is, oh, elections, okay. So we have two elections next year and, or that we know of, two elections, right? And you've got the, the typical items here. You can see them compared to the, the 2024 activity. So they're pretty commensurate with that. I think that we have a good budget in there, although I think if we have only two elections, we'll probably see that. But you don't know if you'll have a third one, and then you've got long buffering there.
There's nine days of early voting.
Yep.
But then those will be reimbursed by percentage of population by our partners.
One thing I meant to ask you is the capital that's planned, is that through a grant? Will that be through a grant, do you think, on this one? Okay.
We are planning 15,000 to 20,000 per precinct for new election equipment that will be implemented in 2027, has to be in place by '28.
Okay.
We did proactively reduce precincts so that there is that amount less. But we're starting to put those funds aside so we're ready and not having to do one lump sum. And we are still waiting for the grant funding reimbursement from 2024.
Okay. But I didn't put any, any reimbursement in there for that. So I just want to make sure that that was correct.
The only reimbursement will be the portions of the other jurisdictions for those 18 days of early voting.
So is this 30, are we out, are we putting that out next year on this one? Or is that a portion of what we'll be putting out in '26, '27? Okay. And we've got.
It's going to be in, this, 2026 and 2027 is going to.
Okay. And we, I mean, we already have that in fund balance, so we're okay if we include that or not, but it's fine. It's final.
We just have to make sure that we're not excited on it.
Yeah, absolutely. And you'll see where we end up, but it, I mean, it matters neither here nor there, so. Okay. So with that, we'll go on to Department 265 with the Office Manager. As mentioned in the cover sheet, hold on a second. I do have the Office Manager going from part-time to full-time. I mentioned some of the additional duties. Taylor is, in particular, has done an excellent job in grasping on some of the special assessment districts that'll help leverage those. FOIA, as you mentioned. Also, Ryan has talked to me about sending her to the MCAT class. The MCAT class is like two days, and you just take a test. But what it lets you do is, you know, put in the property transfer affidavits, which is just highly administrative. We do that. It lets Isaac get out into the field even more. So, because we have quite a bit of properties to cover. Let's see, we have the communications that we are utilizing on a contract basis. Bookkeeper, we do have that taken down some because we've talked about doing the reconciliations in-house and just having them kind of checked or whatever through, through there. So we should have some savings there. Payroll expenses, traditional items, postage, supplies. Those types of things are pretty well in line with what you've seen in the past. No real huge outliers as you kind of go down the list there. Yeah. So I will say this printout did not print out the recommended. And the recommended, when I went through, was just a couple dollars off, so about 400. I'll let you know which line items those were, but they were very few, far between. Trace and I both tried to get it to print, and it would not do it. But in the end, the recommended versus requested was a difference of like $400. And I think it was actually based on the 2.8 versus the previous was, some of it was calculated on 3% on, on one of the positions or something. Health insurance, went through that in, in detail. It does include the, the added personnel, as well as a 14% bump. HSA, HRA, all of those include the HRA. Of course, we don't budget that totally because not everybody's going to max out theirs every year. We just tend to do what we think will happen. You know, two or three employees. Last year, we had like less than one, so. Life insurance and pension, and the pension is just a calculation of all of those salaries and wages and the percentage of that. Road projects, really just included in there is the, is the riding and also the landscaping of that maintenance of the roundabout, yep. Which I am going around about with the Road Commission on that. Yeah, so we'll, we'll see. But right now, that's what, that's what we're doing. Utilities, pretty straightforward. We don't have a zoning ordinance revision anymore that we're working on. And we went over the 623. Um, we went over the 623, uh, the 624. I don't have anything in here right now. Um, we'll be doing a couple of things. This is the Beach District. And so talked with Claire about, you know, where do we, how are we funding this, you know, now? We've, what the recommendation from Beckett and Raider is, is to front load that by $50,000 and then have that, if we do a TIF, then that will be replaced by the TIF. So we'll look at that. I wasn't sure that we wanted to place it in here though, because there are some very specific line items where you would want to put those other things. So I think what we would do with that is probably do a much smaller portion just to get a couple of board meetings through and then, um, look at setting up the, the correct fund through the chart of accounts for that. And then we would use fund balance to front load that, which would be repaid by that TIF, if that is what so happens with the, with the funding of that. Um, let's see, with the 702, we've got, uh, wages are all adjusted by the 2.8. some standard payroll, supplies, um, legal, contract, engineering expenses. You know, with all of the questions and the alleged violations and so forth, where we do the, um, the, uh, our due diligence in investigating those and questions that come up, we do have several expenses through there as, you know, you've seen those this year, for example, in that 2025 activity. Uh, standard education association mileage. We are looking at changing that printing and publishing so that we, we're looking at changing the escrow policy so that we can charge those applicants for their mileage and, and the publication when we have to send out something based on their application.
Does we do the?
We used to do that a long time ago, if you remember.
Well, we do the, um, the Record Eagle bill gets charged to the escrow, but not the mailings or the, like, the postage for the mailings.
You're agreeing.
Huh?
You're agreeing.
Agreeing what?
With each other.
The mail, the?
The mailing is not included in the escrow at this point, but the publishing or the rec, from the, in the Record Eagle.
Yeah.
Is covered under the escrow.
I think that our Record Eagle is actually under this publishing. We looked at it today. Claire and I looked at it today. Because she was saying, well, we, we have more than that. And I was like, yeah, there's several there. It's covered under here.
Why do I have an escrow?
Um, we do, we probably have a rarity. Maybe there's something.
I don't know.
I don't know. Um, or maybe it's older, some older stuff, I don't know. Um, so, but we're going to look at, um, adjusting that escrow policy. So we may be able to take some of that printing and publishing down for that, for that department. 703 is your, um, zoning board of appeals. We, we base that on seven meetings. They clearly can meet 12 times. They rarely if ever do. So we base it on what they traditionally do and if we would need to go back and bump that, we, we can. The 704 is your planning commission. We've left, we've left just a little bit of legal in there in case we have attendance at one of the planning commission meetings that is not attributable to a, an applicant. Because if it's attributable to the applicant, the applicant pays. But, you know, sometimes they're here for, at, at the planning commission for like a zoning amendment information or something like that. The 751 is the Parks Commission. Standard board meeting fees that you'll see in the rest of the, um, boards. Supplies, um, supplies for the food security incubator. That includes the, um, seeds charge, the contract that we have for, um, staffing that. Um, you'll see the, they have engineering, um, grant fees in there for some projects that they are working on. And then you'll go down to, um, that, those last three numbers are the 275,000 that I mentioned on those three projects. Um, again, the $225,000 project is sitting with Wade Trim right now, getting the, um, documents ready to bid. And the one is sitting with the architect and the other one will be, will be working with, um, a supplier, a supplier of, um, equipment, but also someone who, um, who handles the painting or the retrofitting of the, yeah. Uh, we go to two, or the 770 and the, um, you do have both of the individuals in here. The half, half, full-time and the, I mean, rather the part-time and the full-time personnel. And then, um, the, um, contract services, uh, and maintenance and repair that are pretty standard. Okay, we go over to our insurance and bonds, took a look at what that was. I don't have the Boardman River project in here because we haven't received any invoice for that this year. So I'm wondering, is that even a thing anymore?
so are we looking at the insurance and bonds for the building and liability? That's, um, under the township board, right?
No, no, she's.
Was asking about.
Boardman River project?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you moved on.
Nope, that's okay, page 30.
I have, no, um, usually Steve Largent remembers in November, December to bill us.
Well, I look back and it was August in past years.
He retired.
And he retired.
That could be why. Nobody else has taken that on.
Yeah, so, um, usually when they don't bill us, when we have this with TARP, I don't ask. I just move on. Um, so fireworks agreement, obviously they have billed us. Um, public access and, uh, TTCI contribution. You will notice like that public access TV has gone down a little bit and you think, oh, well, why are we going down on an expense? And really it's because that's related to the contract and our charter franchise fees are going down. Now, that charter franchise agreement is up in 2027. So already in 2025, um, the supervisors, the city, um, have contacted Mike Watzah, who helped us through the last agreement. And we did pretty decent on that agreement considering it was, you know, we did better in creating a more stable funding, um, from how they calculated it, was my recollection. So we contacted him again and we said, hey, do we know this is going to be up in 2027? Do you want to meet again and have the supervisors, um, and the city work cooperatively? And, um, everybody seems to be interested in that. So we're going to take, we're going to have a meeting in 2026 to just kind of see where we're at with that. Because funds are going down for charter franchise slowly. I'm a little bit concerned and we'll know more after that if the ramping up, if they start to go down more quickly. We'll see, we'll see. Um, so that brings us to, what you'll find is, um, you're, you're at a use of fund balance of 300,000. So that 300,000, what that tells you is, again, you have $275,000, 275,000 in capital improvements, remember, with the parks. So what that tells you is we are generally, and I think I made this point to you guys in September, we're generally at an operational budget with our budget, okay? So there's not a tremendous amount of, you've got 275 in the capital in parks, you've got 30, right, in capital and equipment for election. So that takes you to like, what, just about 300,000? If you took those out, we'd be basically a zero budget. Forget that, that the numbers are bigger because we know that those big projects are already offset by the revenues. So what really the difference is, um, is just those smaller capital items between parks and the election. That tells us we're at an operational budget. So we're fine being in an operational budget for this year. We have a good amount of fund balance. And in the past, if you were to look back at previous years, when we have budgeted fund balance, we haven't used it or we've used a fraction of it. Um, so we have a pretty healthy fund balance. But with the, I'm going to take a look at in the following year, in the following cycle, next fall, is where do you want that mileage rate to be at? You, it was a .6778. This year we kept it at 6778. So does the board interested in dealing like, um, a rollback or a 1% tax?
Administrative.
Which I think many of the townships deal around that traverse.
Yeah.
Um, so those are some options. But what you really need to get at is you need to get out, um, an operational budget plus some every year that's headed towards capital, right? So we don't always want to just lean on the fund balance for that. We want some amount that's coming out for capital in a year. It's exactly what we've done with Metro. It makes a really strong organization. This is a strong financial organization. But I will say with the demands that are on the township, um, that, you know, and as the township ages and its items within the township age, that capital need is there, obviously. Um, let's see, you do have the, the resolution for the wages. Just to get a sense of where we were at with those. Sue, I didn't get a chance to talk to you about those, but I just pulled out your office assistance and put away the 2.8, and I left the other ones to be adjusted as needed.
Most of that is done at the county level, the county, at our county, local county clerk's meetings, we try to set those so that we're not competing for that small pool of election workers.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. Yep, we just bring them back here and then we can implement them through this. That sounds good. When do they usually do that, Sue?
Um, we will probably be doing that in the beginning of the year.
Okay, that sounds good. That works. Um, so you'll see what those are. And then you also have the second packet goes through the, the other special revenue funds. 206, 207, and 210, you guys have seen in September and passed those. They are approved, but we include them in the general appropriations. If you skip to page 10 in that packet. Uh, I'm sorry, I'm going to have you skip to page nine. You'll see, um, the first fund after those emergency service funds, um, it's the 230. It is the, um, short-term rental fund. We're predicting a very similar revenue as, um, we haven't changed the number of licenses yet. So it's a simple calculation. And then in the expenses, we've made an assumption on what the contract services will change as they've changed in the past. Um, the reason you saw higher expense under contract services in 2024, you'll remember that was the year when we had two different contractors and we knew that was going to be a higher year because we were paying a portion of both of them through the transition. Um, that transfer to or from other funds, you'll see, that's going out of the short-term rental fund and that goes into the general fund. Then we go on to the PEG revenue, quite, quite, quite a simple one. Bring in some funds and then we pay some of that portion out on a contractual basis. 251 is kind of quirky because for some reason we have to budget for it, but it's not exactly a traditional fund. So what the accountants tell us is to pick and operate the around the total amount and put that in in revenues and expenditures. That's what we've done for the past couple of years and that has, that has worked. So I've been, um, been fine with audit. The opioid, um, I don't know if we get any additional funding. I never really know and it seems like the most of it has come through. There's been some other ones, but some of them have been so small that we fell under the threshold that they don't even, you know, write anything. Um, we do have the opportunity, if we would like to, we can forward the 3873 to the county. They can throw it in with their opioid money. But what I mentioned to them was, well, we may hold on to that. The idea that we had was to provide some opioid, opioid response items, right? The Narcan, the emergency stuff that you'll see on walls and places to hotels and restaurants up in the Beach District. So we know that if we forwarded that money to the county, because I've asked them, if we forward the money, can you do something like that? And they're not interested, it would go straight into their system of where they're putting out money. And, um, so we can hold on to that and see if we want, that's something we want to do. If we don't end up using it, say like in a year or two, and through, through the Beach District, then perhaps that's maybe something that we do. But there's no real need to necessarily move on that now. Um, and then you will see the 850. We do have to budget for the 850. It's not in there yet. I'm going to put Tracy's, um, numbers that we went over tonight into that, um, requested and, uh, revenues and expenses for the 850. So this is, um, a bit of information. You just received it tonight. Happy to answer any questions or go over anything tonight. It's also been a lengthy meeting, it's about nine o'clock. So we can take a look at, you know, talking about this in a special meeting. We can talk about it some here, we can forward it to the December meeting. We do have to, as it tells you on this cover sheet, um, timeframe, uh, we must hold the public hearing no later than December 15th, which is fine. Our meeting is December 8th. We've done that before in the past. And of course, we have to have it adopted by the end of the year, of course. So we can do any of those things. I will mention, um, we are looking at that special meeting, uh, with Dawn to go over the sewer project, the funding of the sewer project, December. Do you want to make that sure?
You said December 3rd.
3rd, it was a Wednesday, it was the day.
I will be gone, I'm at a training.
Okay, okay. That was the only day really she had.
I mean, I understand.
Cause she's flying in.
She's flying in for the ACME meeting on the second. And I, we talked about, did she want to meet with the boards together or separate? And she felt like it would be best to meet with ACME, um, determine that need and then, and then also meet with us.
I mean, I get that we can't all be here. I just, I, we, I've paid for the classes, I can't.
Oh, no, I understand, I understand. Um, does anybody else?
Townships paid for the classes.
What's that?
The townships paid for the classes.
I get it, I get it. Um, December 3rd, does, does that work or not work for?
Yeah, I think it works for me.
Works for you, okay. Dawn?
It's not going to work for me.
Not going to work for you, okay. Okay, okay, I'm good, are you? Okay, so we've got two. Matt?
Yeah, at this point.
Okay, all right, so it looks like we'll have a forum. So we'll go ahead and, and do that. I don't even know that we'll make the decision on December 4th. We may just hear the information, come up with the framework.
December 3rd.
And it, 3rd, December 3rd.
Saying that.
Yeah, sorry, December 3rd. I don't even know that we'll make the decision on December 3rd. We'll hear the information from Dawn, get a framework together. It may be that that is forwarded to the December 8th meeting too, so. Uh, but with that, we could as well piggyback and do some of this, um, as well on December 3rd, either prior to or after, um, Dawn. What was, is the board's pleasure with that?
I'd like to be at the discussions for the budget. I can't be on the 3rd.
Oh, okay, okay. Any other items or was there, I mean, is there discussion points that there's any, I mean?
I think since we all just got the material tonight, it'd be nice to review it and come back with any questions.
Okay, when's, so you're thinking the December 8th meeting or a different special meeting?
What else do you have on the December 8th meeting? This one was quite full.
Oh, yes, it was. We have an OHM contract.
It's freezing in here. Mindy's put on a coat.
I thought it was, I thought it was on the first point. First came in.
We have to have it adopted by the 15th.
Correct, correct. I mean, we can absolutely, I could put together the public hearing with this information. And, you know, you can, we can always titrate it from there. So we could, we can still do December 8th if we don't want to do another special meeting. Or we can do a special meeting in between.
So we're getting close to Thanksgiving, otherwise if we do in November. Park Commission's on the 17th.
Yeah, but we have two, we have two meeting rooms. I won't be here on the 17th.
The ZBA is 20.
So we could do, are you here the 18th?
No, I'm down at Cleveland Clinic.
Oh. When are you back, the 24th?
ZBA.
Okay.
What time's your ZBA, 6:30? We could probably do before the ZBA. The 24th before the ZBA at like, say?
Or the 25th, which is a Tuesday?
No, I've got Cleveland Clinic.
Again?
Yeah.
Okay, are you back the 20th?
Yes, yes.
What about the 20th?
I've got two patients in two weeks, I never have to bear.
November 20th.
Yeah, I'll be back on the 20th.
Will you?
If that works for majority.
Yeah, but it's fine.
Matt Cook, does 20th work for you or a budget?
That's next Thursday, then I'll be, I'll be out now.
Mindy?
Where's for me?
Tracy?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah.
It's fine. Would that be better for you guys than to have it December 8th? Would you feel more comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I do.
You can call in your questions and email them in.
You just can't participate.
Yeah, I mean, it's a first pass here, but I feel like I would look at a group that would have anything on a first pass. So, I'm just bringing up this.
Okay, let me know as you look at it again. You can certainly give me a call and I'd be happy to bring any of your questions or concerns to the rest of the board on that special meeting.
So November 20th, 6:30?
Yeah. But we won't move Dawn to that time because she won't have.
Not if she's flying in for something else. But that way, it can be a public forum where we can just discuss it a little bit more, whatever we need to.
Yeah, definitely, that's fine.
Still do the public hearing notice on these numbers.
For December.
For December 8th.
Yeah, that's fine, totally fine. And maybe we'll even have some numbers back for you on the vehicle.
Sounds good.
6:30?
30.
Okay, with that, we come to public comment. Oh my goodness, look at you guys, it's completely empty.
We can't, the public comment.
All right, so upcoming meeting dates, we did just set a November 20th special meeting at 6:30 PM. We will also have a December 3rd special meeting. I will get you the time on that. Let's see, there's a couple of us here on the 3rd. Does anyone have any, what's the earliest you can do, Mindy? And you were here as well.
Yeah, probably I'd say 6:00.
6:00, okay. I mean, we can still do 6:30, it's not a problem.
Either is fine.
Okay, Mindy? Matt?
6:30 is better.
Okay, that's fine. We'll do 6:30 on December 3rd as well. And then, of course, we have our meeting on December 8th, our regular meeting. All right, with that, if there's no objection, then we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for the meeting time and attention. Have a good evening, drive safe.